May meeting of Devonport City Council is 5.30 on the 23rd of May. Council acknowledge and pays respects to the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as being traditional and original owners and continuing custodians of this land on which we live. All persons in attendance are advised that it's council policy to record council meetings in accordance with council's digital recording policy. The digital recording of this meeting will be made available to the public on council's website for a minimum period of six months. And a reminder that this meeting is also being livestreamed on council's YouTube channel. Item one is apologies, and we have an apology from Councilwoman Vaughan this evening. Item two is declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest in the meeting, by any comment or information? Item three is procedural matters. Item 3.1 is confirmation of the units of the meeting of the 26th of April.
So move.
Second.
Councilor Laicock and Councilor Garland, thank you. Councilor Laicock.
It's merely procedural, then.
Thank you, Councilor Garland.
It's all there, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? I'll ask Councilor Laicock to close.
Consider close.
Thank you. I'll put the motion, all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item 3.2 is topic question time. And item 3.2.1 is responses to questions raised at prior meetings. We can refer to the dash here to have a move, please.
So.
Councilor Vaughan, Councilor Laicock.
I use to answer them.
Thank you, Councilor Laicock.
Nothing to add, can you?
Are there any questions? I'll ask Councilor Murphy first.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion, all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item 3.2.2 is questions on notice from the public. And there were no questions on notice from the public for this meeting. Item 3.2.3 is questions without notice from the public, which is the opportunity for members of the gathering to ask their question. I would ask you to step forward to the recording, stay in the number address and ask your questions. Thank you.
Right, Truv Smith, seven Glen Court, Devonport. D Chairperson, before submitting my questions, could I have written replies to my questions rather than verbal answers? Earlier this month, there was an article in the media, public sessions to provide feedback on the Burnie City Council's 2022/23 draft budget will be occurring over the next two weeks. As the council aims to make the process more transparent, this year, the Burnie Council are adding another element of transparency by putting the budget out for community consultation, ensuring that the community have direct input into council's budget and decision-making process. It's probably too late to start this process this year. If so, will you include this great idea for transparency with this council for next year's budget? If Burnie has the courage to do it, so can you. Also, right in the media again, this month, it said that the retail centre DA was liked for the complex at the corner of Friend Street and Stanley Rise Road. Will you be following the same rules that you used to stop pedestrian traffic from banding the Seabees district by only allowing large retail complexes to exist rather than small shop spaces at the Friend Street, Devonport? This shopping complex is less than 700 metres away from the Friend Street big box development. What is the difference when you didn't allow small shops in Friend Street and this complex you will? This will be more fragmentation away from the Devonport CBD. Recently, work commenced at one on 14 one-bedroom units and seven two-bedroom units on the land that was once parkland for the rate highs of Devonport at Tarp Street, East Devonport. How much rate revenue will you be receiving from these units when completed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Smith. Any other questions? No? I'll move on, thank you.
Got questions, Madam Chair?
Just in time, Mr Garland.
Sorry?
I was about to call it.
Oh, yeah. When did you call us, it's called, okay. Madam Chair, Malcolm Garland, full by my drive, my dinner. Question one, in relation to what was previously referred to as in 2016 as Living City Stage Two being a new northern retail precinct, now apparently been resurrected, the general manager reported in the advocate a saying, the first area for commercial development includes the old library, Fenton Way and a small park area. The council has also looked at straightening up Fenton Way and a small park area. Straighten up Fenton Way, sorry. And therefore, the question is, will council confirm that the straightening up of Fenton Way is not linked to making more land available for a viable development of the small park area being offered for sale? It would increase that if you straighten up Fenton Way, the little piece of lot.
Would you get your way straightened, Mr Garland?
Well, they're straightening up to meet North Fenton Street, I believe, otherwise you're not straightening it.
Certainly part of the conversation, Mr Garland.
Yes, true, Madam Mayor, and that's all it is. It's part of the conversation. It's one of the options that council is considering.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, further to question one. Will council confirm if it's completed preliminary estimates as to cost associated with straightening up Fenton Way, which involves part demolition, if not all, of the old library building, proper making the current announcement?
Mr Garland, I'll refer you to the response to question one, it's part of the cost.
We're just talking about it. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, further to question one. Considering that the previously referred to Living City Stage Two, New Northern Retail Precinct, included a big W type discount store, a new supermarket and a considerable number of retail outlets, all sounding similar to the recently announced DA submitted for a new seven-and-a-half-thousand-square-metre retail centre, adjacent homemaker centre. Has council taken into account the effect that further duplication will have on council's retail development aspirations? And if achieved, then increased market share pressures on existing retailers?
Again, I'll refer you to the response to question one, Mr Garland. It's all part of the conversation. Thank you.
So you haven't taken into account Fenton.
Thank you, Mr Garland, I've responded to your question.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr Velocott.
Thank you. Bob Velocott, Eleven Cocker Place, Devonport. Mayor and councillors, without going into too much detail, I recently asked per email the general manager if all councillors' bona fides were still in accord with the requirements of the Local Government Act and therefore eligible to serve. His reply was, to the best of my knowledge, all DCC councillors currently met the eligibility requirements. To clarify the present situation of eligibility, I then asked per email, would you guarantee that you have very recently actually checked the bona fides of each existing councillor to ensure that they all do indeed currently meet the requirements of the Local Government Act and thus are all still entitled, eligible to hold office? Mayor, I'm just asking, that's the question.
Is that your question?
Yeah, yeah. I asked this, sorry.
Was that your question?
Sorry, I haven't finished, sorry. I asked this question because the general manager had no hesitation to set the precedent by guaranteeing in December 2016 the council rate bars would receive $400,000 per annum for 10 years from Providore Place, Devonport, for project limited. I contend, surely it is only reasonable to expect that you could give an absolute guarantee, assurance in regard to my question. The general manager's reply was, I refer to, pardon me, I refer to my previous answer and have nothing further to add. Mayor, because it appears the GM will not guarantee that all elected persons serving as councillors are still qualified, will you make sure at this point in time that they all have been and indeed currently meet the eligibility requirements of the relevant sections of the Local Government Act?
Mr Velocott, I understand your question has been asked and answered, thank you. Did you have another?
I beg your pardon, it had not been answered.
Mr Velocott, the general manager responded to your questions. Do you have another question?
So might need an RTI, might it? I have another question, sorry. I refer to the Ombudsman's direction to council that I was, that I believe was received on the 6th of April 2022 to provide a copy of the head lease agreement for Providore Place to me as soon as practicable but no later than the 10th of May 2022. I received the information per post on the 9th of May, some four weeks later. After receiving information, I thanked the general manager per email for saying, and I said I noted it was within the timeframe. I then respectfully asked, asked him, will he give a good reason what prohibit him from providing the head lease when I originally requested it, considering the inordinate timeframe of some three years and six months it took to finally resolve my request? And I also asked why he was unable to provide the information far earlier than the 9th of May 2022, being some four weeks post the Ombudsman's notification to council. The general manager's reply was, the information was provided within the directed timeframe. Indeed, an amazing reply, because I had stated in my email, I was aware of that. He simply did not answer my request. So because the GM would or could not answer the question, I now respectfully ask you, Mayor, why it was not practicable for council to provide to me with the information far earlier than when it was finally made available to me, that is, some four weeks after council received the Ombudsman's notification to do so?
Mr Velocott, it's my recollection that the general manager required the council's permission to release that information, so I had to go over council meeting and then it was released to me.
He had to do that. I thought it was a direct one.
The Ombudsman couldn't force him to do it. We had to give him that permission.
Oh, so you could overrule the Ombudsman?
Well, we had to give that permission to clarify the situation for everyone, make sure that everyone was of the understanding of.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Item 3.3 is questions on notice from the councillors and at the time of the hour, this might. Item 3.4 are notices of motion and items that we need to discuss this evening. Now, I don't really have a lot to manage, rest of the case here. So we move on to item five, reports. And item 5.1 is the reopening of special interest nominations for the public art community. There is an acknowledgement from staff there at item 5.1. Do I have a move? Council Garland, thank you. Council Ennis, thank you, Council Garland.
Yes, look, we thank very much Mr Dobson's help in enabling us to bring this back to council as a decision-making tool. We're very happy with the committee that we've formed, don't get me wrong. However, obviously, we've now found that there's a few wonderful, younger, community-minded people that would like the opportunity to be on the committee as such. We certainly had, I wonder, maybe a couple of them the other day as a consultative type of meeting. But this just formalises it, opens up that gamut so that we've got the wonderful people that already put their hand up, we sure will re-put their hand up, that it just enables us to have better consultation, a bit more diversity on the group. And it certainly makes sense to all of us at that time. So Mr Dobson's really enabled us to do this and bring it back to council for a change.
Thank you, Council Garland. Can I just take clarification? The people who are already on the committee will remain on the committee? This is to fill with the vacancies that they have for Mr Dobson?
It's through you, Madam Chair. Yes, that's correct. It's to increase the community membership of the committee.
Thank you. Just want to clarify that, thank you. Council Ennis, as the second up.
Thank you. I think if there's members of the community really keen to be involved and we get some different points of view, I think it's a good thing. It's going to be increased by two, is that right, Mr Dobson? Thank you. Yeah, so it won't become unworkable, I think it'll be okay. So I support it.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Council Holston?
Yes, I can go with whoever speaks. Because I used to go to these meetings and I think those will be a valuable addition to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other points? I'll ask Council Garland to close.
Consider close.
Thank you, I'll put the motion, all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item 5.2 is disposal of a portion of public land at the Mersey Bluff. We have a recommendation there, I'm going to the chairman, do I have a move?
So move.
Council Murphy, thank you.
Yeah, I'll second that.
And Council Perry, thank you. Council Murphy.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. This is more of a procedural matter than anything else. Provide the opportunity for the Six Rivers Aboriginal community to actually move forward in a less constrained manner in the development of the land, for the future development of the land. So it makes perfect sense for this to occur. Obviously, we have to go through a process that we have to adhere to, so I hope you're willing to support it.
Thank you. Council Perry.
Thanks, Mayor, you have got my support, Council Murphy's comments. Put the words out, it makes perfect sense. If you look at that piece of land that we're discussing, eight hundred square metres, the only organisation or group that could possibly develop that land, that piece of crown land is Six Rivers Aboriginal Corporation. So, you know, it really makes perfect sense to hand it over to them and let them develop that site to the level they'd like to and make it a better place to go to up there and increase the visitation, increase the museum uptake in that particular area. And I think it just makes, it makes perfect sense. If council are not doing this, council would never be able to do something, I guess, meaningful with that land anyway because it's because of the title situation. So this would put aside the title situation, this would clean all that up, you've surrounded that opportunity to develop the site and there are no losers if that happens, so that's pretty much all, thank you.
Thank you. Council Holston?
Yes, I support the motion. I think anything that allows Six Rivers to be able to open to you again as a tourist resort, it always should have been. I think this is why we're supporting, nothing further.
Thank you. Council Garland?
Yeah, I think we settled, it was a no-brainer at the workshop. I suppose a lot of us have known always that it has been this title splitting right straight down the middle, but really appreciate it now being brought to the forefront. And I appreciate that the Office of Aboriginal Affairs contacted us so that we can see that they support it, we all support it. It's only, it's only making sense to have it this sorted. Now, all I can say is, Dave, go open that voice up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I thank fellow councillors for their comments and consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion, all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item six is information, and item 6.1 swapped up some break-in sessions held since the last council meeting during the week. So move.
Second.
Oh, Councilor Garland, Councilor Laicock, Councilor Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor. You've had some very informative workshops and break-in sessions, and I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you. Council Murphy?
I assume the procedural matter.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? I'll ask Councilor Laicock to close.
Consider close.
I'll put the motion, all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item 6.2 is the mayor's monthly report, do I have a move? So move. Council Garland, thank you.
Second then.
Council Alexia, thank you. Council Doran.
I just, I really want to highlight, just, look, you're so busy in all the things you do, sometimes I think it can get lost a bit of how much you do do. But one of the things I think needs to be highlighted, really important, is the Investiture of Australian Awards for wonderful Vicku per mail and Jock gals. What a lovely thing. And two of the nicest people in this community that deserve all the recognition that they've both got. So I just wanted to make that stand out in your diary. I know it's a great diary there, but just one of the nicest things that I'm sure you do. So, yeah, well done to both of them.
Thank you. It was an excellent footage. And, yeah, great joy to be, and I think I haven't seen me there, so it was, it was a great day. Thank you. Council Alexia?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just nothing further out there, thank you.
Are you, are there any other questions or comments? Council Doran to close.
Consider it.
I'll put the motion, all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item 6.3 is the general manager's report.
So.
Second then.
Council Laicock and Council Perry, thank you. Council Laicock.
Thank you, Mayor. Another busy month for our general manager, Fred Woodbury. Just, if I could just go to page 22, Mayor asked a question of the general manager through you. Point five, the other, the Johnlark Reserve being now gone to public consultation for the reserve name to be removed to make it park, and that's great. So let's hope that everybody's happy with that. But the next step, general manager from that, are we going to advertise through our internal media that we can contact family and friends so that we can have an official launch with a plaque out there at Johnlark Park? Thank you, it's quite a nice one.
Yeah, through you, Mayor, that's correct. We'll organise a, who'll intervene on site to unveil the park and invite the family and other members of the community that might be interested.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council Perry, as the second up.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, the general manager's obviously done a lot more along work again. And item 1.6 in relation to the 2022/23 draft budget videos have started streaming through and there's a wide information in there. That's a fantastic way for us to get that information. And I think it's very innovative, we already know that. And other councils around Australia appreciate that, understand. And so that's been really enlightening. And you can tell that the general manager is really in his element in front of the camera. And, you know, really liked the opportunity to be dramatic. And offer us some lighthearted relief from what can be a dry subject, so thank you for that, thank you.
Thanks, Council Perry. Council Garland?
I guess, honestly, Mayor, I'm aware that you were in this meeting, but just a bit more information on meeting at Geelong City about the spirits, how's that going and what kind of relationship are we going to get through that?
Yeah, through you, Mayor. I guess that initial meeting was just to introduce ourselves and just gauge the interest. I think it was encouraging to see that they were certainly pleased we reached out to them and I think we got the impression that they were keen to, you know, build that relationship and certainly the opportunity there much stronger than what it previously perhaps had been with Port Melbourne. So it's been a standalone city and standalone port, we can really connect with them and current timeline, the spirits will be going into Geelong around December this year. And so we're committed to continuing to build those two good opportunities to promote each other's cities. Are there any other opportunities like that?
No, excellent, though, that's brilliant. Certainly something, you know, we never thought we would have had an opportunity to do. And we really couldn't do much with Port Melbourne, so this is going to be great. I can only see a winning for everyone. Well done, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Council Holston, comment?
Years ago, with the spirits, when they used to go to Melbourne, they used to have a sister city relationship with Port Melbourne specifically for the same reason. Is there any talk about similar situation with Geelong?
Yeah, through you, Mayor, that was obviously something that came up that we thought we might, we might look at.
Certainly we did have a strong relationship with them, having lived much longer, people to spend time there and sort of musically. It was, it was very encouraging, this meeting and certainly on top of the desk, I continued that conversation. And we have some musical visiting for it, and it's kind of, I've got a feel for it. It was a very encouraging first meeting.
Exactly, yeah. Thank you, Council Holston. Are there any other comments, questions? Council Laicock, she's closed, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I think most of you would have sent me an article in the paper about the Johnlark Reserve, as was noted at that time, Johnlark Park, about the stone. And the advocate did put in the paper that I'd be happy to hear from anybody that had any idea where this great stone came from, it had Don Park painted on it. And it was interesting because the very next day, I had a call from an ex-council employee that was working in that area with water and sewage, when we had control of water and sewage. And he said that stone came from the Don River. So just in case anybody was interested in a little bit of local history, although I have an interesting part to say, on the backside of that stone, to me, they look like bricks, so I'm still investigating and I still need help. Thank you.
Thank you. I will put the motion, all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item 6.4 is the general management, people, finance and corporate services report. Do you have a move, actually?
So move.
Council Murphy, thank you. Second up.
Second.
Council Holston, thank you. Council Murphy. Castle Murphy.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. In the procedure, and the comment must be made, that the amount of information that's now available compared to previous years is extremely detailed now. And a lot of that is attributed to the direction that they're moving from an IT perspective and how accessible, almost an hourly basis, it can be updated. So, yes, it's, again, a very positive report.
Thank you. Castle Holst. Second then.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a very detailed report on lots of different things. Covered by Mr. Pan. Elaborating, if anybody wants to read it, it's all there. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? I'll ask Castle Murphy to close.
Consider applause, Mayor.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All eyes on page, please stay on.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six point five is the Community Services Report for March two later. Do you have any moves, please?
Yes, please.
Second.
Castle John and Castle Murphy. Thank you.
I've said a lot before. Yes, please. Yes, thank you. As always, there's lots to read in this report as well. And just again highlighting the youth advisory councils up and running, which is fantastic. Just interested to know if we're going to start to get some reports back as such of what the young people are saying, what they're wanting, so that we can certainly work with that. Don't want them just to talk and no action. I really want to make sure that they're going to get something from this so that they can say that council does listen to them, that we're not just ticking a box. That's my favorite saying. So I certainly hope that we can also come up with things where we say, can we go and ask them what they're doing and what they think of something we're doing? And use it a lot more, the more that we go forward with this. I'm very excited that we've got one finally. It works so good in some other regions, not every region, but it's certainly something that's very important for us to be listening to our young people. And I'm sure Mr. Dobson would be able to utilise it as well with our art. And I'm sure that you're looking forward to doing that. And whether or not we can have a meeting with them. Can they come to a council meeting? Do we bring them into the gallery? Do we make sure that we get them invited? Can we have them at the next meeting? Perhaps would be really nice.
Thank you, Castle John.
Yeah.
They're certainly setting their own agenda and they're meeting very regularly and working really hard. So anything to do with things themselves, not just ask us to do stuff.
No, of course.
So there, there are some options there that I would suggest, but they're certainly looking at, they're working really hard, really.
Excellent. Thank you. Castle Mary.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a real positive, again, looking at actually how much is happening in the community. Just going to sporting events, it's just great to see these types of things now happen again. Covid still has a bit of impact and everything else. But I hope everyone's prepared for the long weekend in June. The soccer will rain again.
Friction.
There'll be even soccer people everywhere.
Absolutely.
Castle Ennis.
I'd just like to commend the council for their work on the getting the ground prepared, the home football, important table for the Healy-Peelcrest match was fantastic. The council people did a fantastic job, worked extremely hard. And we received a lot of pats on the back and kudos for how well it was turned out. So thank you very much for the great work that the council president did. Not only just on the ground, but in, in making that match go ahead. It was fantastic. So congratulations to all involved.
Thank you, Castle Liz. Yeah, it was, it was a huge effort and we also had volunteers involved in the day from various groups in the city. It was a huge collaborative event and I acknowledge everyone who contributed. Castle Wykow.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a great report as usual. I'm just wondering, there was no comment in the editorial on the Devonport Food and Wine Festival Committee. I'm just wondering if perhaps, I don't know whether Carol's going to be here tonight. Somebody can follow through because we're running into our last five months. We haven't really started on this big event. There's a lot of work got to go into it. So I thought if we could just follow up on that, because it is an important event for Devonport and the North West Coast. And thank you.
Thank you, Castle Wykow. And any other comments, questions? Castle John to close.
Yeah, I certainly agree with Council Ennis bringing up that wonderful event that was run. And so many people did such a lot of work to make sure everyone was feeling the love. And what a great day. We really put Devonport to show how, how well we can put things on. There's nothing about us. We've got some great venues. So thank you.
Thank you. I will put the motion. All eyes on page, please stay on.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six point six is the Convention and Analysis Report for March nine. Do you have any moves, please?
So move.
Castle Murphy. Thank you. Second then.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor. Wales is, Devonport really is cementing itself as the cultural hub of the northern half of the state, I think, now. We are really kicking some massive goals in this particular space. So congratulations to Mr. Dobson and his team. Look forward to what is not too far away from being new in Devonport.
Thank you. Castle Alexia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, no, it's a, it's a great work that was behind the scenes from Mr. Dobson there. Look forward to more events. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions?
Question.
Question, Castle Holst.
Mr. Dobson. I don't know if individuals with challenges are having a big effect on us.
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor. The pandemic still has an impact. Just recently saying the Crow of Coast Theatre has been fired at council for the first two weekends. Forces and added additional shows this week to try and fit in all the audience. So continues to, with the relaxing of the COVID restrictions last week, we expect less interruptions moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. Any other questions? I'll ask Castle Murphy to close today.
Consider closed, Mayor.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All eyes on page, please stay on.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six point seven is Young People Minutes of November six, Council's Board of Panel. Do I have any moves, please?
So move.
Castle Murphy. Thank you.
Second.
And Castle Wykow. Castle Murphy.
Yes, Mayor, useful detail in the report.
Thank you. Castle Wykow.
Nothing to add, Mayor.
Any comments, questions? I'll ask Castle Murphy to close today.
Consider close.
After the motion. All eyes on page, please stay on.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six point eight is the Annual Members' Expenses Report to the Thursday of May fourth.
So move.
Second.
And Castle Murphy. Thank you. Castle Wykow.
Nothing to add, Mayor. It's all in the report.
Castle Murphy.
Good to see that you just made new relation to my attendance at the GAT, which was a positive experience.
Do you have any other comments, questions? I'll ask Castle Wykow to close.
Consider close.
I'll put the motion. All eyes on page, please stay on.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six point nine is the Annual Plan Progress Report to the Thursday of April. Do I have any moves, please?
So move.
Castle Murphy. Thank you. Second then.
Second then.
And Castle Alexia. Thank you. Castle Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor. Fellow councils will note, and so will the community, that have read the agenda, there's some big ticket items in this particular report. None so more than the draft Greater Residential Growth Strategy that now is out for public consultation. I think this is, again, it demonstrates the direction and foresight this council has. Everyone's noticed that the installation of the solar panels on top of the Panacal Art Centre is now complete. So we don't have to sit and list down there in Rook Street anymore and kick stuff up. So, and the final draft, which I think is going to have an impact of the, of the evaluations from the Office of the Valuable General, we're having to see. So, again, very detailed.
Thank you. Castle Alexia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nothing further said there.
Thank you. Are there any comments, questions? I'll ask Castle Murphy to close. Thank you.
Consider closed, Mayor.
I'll put the motion. All eyes on page, please stay on.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item seven point one is the Training Authority Community Minutes from the ninth of May. Do I have any moves, please?
So move.
Castle Kerry and Castle Wykow. Thank you. Castle Kerry.
Ah, joining the report. Straight forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Castle Wykow.
Good scene for everyone to read. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? I'll ask Castle Perry to close.
Consider closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All eyes on page, please stay on.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item need a move to out of...
I can see so move.
Second.
Castle Wykow and Castle Murphy. Any comments on my behalf?
No.
I'll call the back. Put the motion. All eyes on page, please stay on.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Please, our open session of our magnetic interplays at six hours seven. Thank you everyone for your attendance.